I was a number one suspect.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome. We'll begin with prayer. Lord, we come to you on this national day of prayer and we raise our prayer to you with millions of other people in the United States and we ask that you would continue to bless this community, bless our residents, and bless our community leaders, our state and local leaders, and give them wisdom and guidance to make good decisions. Bless you and bless this commission, give them your wisdom and guidance as they make decisions on behalf of our of our community. Bless our management and staff as we as we make decisions, give us your wisdom and guidance as well. With our employees as they work every day to provide our services to this community, watch over them, bring them home safely every night. And we lastly, we ask you to bless this food, nourish our bodies, and bless us as we do your work. Bless you, sing in your name. Amen.
Let me just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think first up, we have our RP three award and we're trying to hold it up here. Thank you. Just want to give a brief overview of the RP three award process. As you're well aware, we're members of the American Public Power Association and as always, you try to benchmark yourself against other utilities and the RP three award is the best way for us to compare us against our peers. There's over 2,000 members in association with the APPA and if you want to go to the next slide, and we've got a little video that kind of gives a good overview of what the RP three means and the process of the application process that we go through. So that we turn over. You should watch this.
The Reliable Public Power Provider Program is APPA's way to recognize utilities that set the bar in reliability, safety, workforce development, and system improvement. An RP three designation demonstrates to community leaders, governing board members, suppliers, and service providers a utility's commitment to excellence. RP three applicants earn points for their use and implementation of leading practices. Criteria within each of the four categories are based on sound business processes and represent a utility-wide commitment to safe and reliable delivery of electricity. Each confidential application is thoroughly vetted by an eighteen-member expert panel of public power representatives. Submissions are due annually on September 30th. Utilities may be recognized as gold, platinum, or diamond reliable public power providers. Leading practices undeniably improve utility operations. Utilities performing all leading practices on the RP three safety checklist have a 51% better incidence rate than others on average. APPA and its members have observed the quantifiable benefits in utility performance due to continued participation in the RP three program. Many utilities have been able to use their designation to lower insurance or bond rates.
I've been involved with Public Power since 1988 and been involved in the electric industry since 1964. So to me, this RP three program is is one of the the best programs that APPA has come up with. It just typifies, I think, what public power and APPA particularly stand for, making your systems the best they can be and making your customers the most happy customers in the U.S.
Visit publicpower.org/rp3 or email rp3@publicpower.org for more information.
It's a very rigorous application process. Scott Natcher, Operations Manager. It's electronic, but when we print out all the information, it's a three-ring binder of all the information.
APPA congratulates the ninety-seven utilities receiving RP three red admission.
It it takes about a hundred, they gave the estimate, it takes almost utilities around 120 hours to complete this process. About 12% of the municipal members receive either the gold, platinum, or diamond out of the 2,000 members. As mentioned, S&amp;P and Duffield have great interest in this. They came they came down to APPA and they said, hey, what's this program because it has helped utilities with their bonding rates? And also, we have AEGIS as one of our insurance carriers. They come in about every three years and they do an audit and we just went through that audit back in December and they said they could tell that we were an RP three member because of the we just had very few recommendations because of the process of inspection and policies that we had in place. So in 2008 and 2010, OMU received a gold status and in 2012 and 14, we received platinum status. But this year, I'm pleased to announce that we achieved diamond status. We had a 100% score out of 100 and we received the award Monday at the American Public Power Engineering and Operations Conference. So with that, I'd like to present this award to our General Manager, Kevin Fidel, our Chairman, Jake D. Fox. Say, it takes a total team, it takes a commission that's willing to approve policies, procedures, governance programs, management to work these inspection processes and follow through with them. And by all means, it takes our employees, our hard-working, dedicated employees to fulfill all of these statistics and complete all the reliability indices that we need. So thanks to everybody and just want to say kudos to everyone. We'll see. Tim and his guys and folks have delivered a great job and this is the result of that. So excellent job and Tim's done a great job reading that group's work. So we appreciate it. Next, we are going to jump in and go through the budget presentation. Laura, Laura or Jason, or both? Before we get into it, there just in the full disclosure, the presentation, we caught a couple of typos in our presentation. We posted, so we didn't repost that, but we fixed the spelling errors on this one since it's going to be up on the board. Jason and Laura and Lynn and that group have done a great job pulling this all together. They spent a lot of time crunching numbers and it starts with at the department level with everybody in the organization, one form or fashion or another, is involved in pulling together this budget. So we have worked hard on this. We've got some challenges. As you guys know, we talked about and we'll see how we recommend to address those going into this. But it's been a it's been a very intensive effort to get us to this point and I really appreciate all the work everybody's put into it and Laura, take it from there.
Okay, it's hard for me to talk at that last presentation, so I was like, maybe Jason should do it. I'll be presenting the P and L or the income statement part of the budget. Following my presentation, I will turn it over to various representatives from the departments that will present their capital budgets. I'll start with the consolidated electric system budget and then identify some of the key components that are in our budget. It is based on a 2.2 million megawatt hour generation from Elmer Smith. We have included wholesale prices of about $35 per megawatt hour. We did see a small decrease in our retail sales so that our ECCA revenue is down, but we did not include any increases to our base rates for the electric retail customers. As Kevin mentioned, back in March, we came before the board and presented a proposed budget and we identified some issues of concern for us and you guys provided some guidance on how to proceed with the budget. And as a result, we have included a half cent increase in our ECA rate effective June and another half cent increase effective in December of '18. We are proposed, including in our budget, we are proposing an increase to our ECA balance limit from 15 million to 20 million. So that's a $5 million increase. But it does require still a reserve transfer of 3.3 million dollars to comply to that new proposed limit. As far as contingency assumptions, we have about $50,000 of delivery expense for storms included, about $800,000 of unplanned maintenance at Elmer Smith. And then our wholesale revenues are not fully hedged and so that winter and summer prices are still very key to performance. Our coal supply is entirely contracted and our retail sales, very similar to wholesale, is very, there's still very much weather contingent as well. So getting into the numbers of our budget, our net income at 12.1 million is down 1.6 from our fiscal year '18 budget, also down from what we projected for this current year as well. That pretty much tells us that our increase to ECA revenue is kind of offset by our fuel costs associated with the additional generation. If we add back depreciation to our net income, we come to a net operating revenue revenues that represents what's available for our debt service. This following the second trend is our net income and it's down 3.1%. But if you take that, take notice of that 38.7 million for our budget for '19 and we need to deduct our revenue requirements from that, being 25.8 million of debt service funding, about 9.7 million for the city transfer, and that does include a two-and-a-half percent increase on the cash dividend. We need to deduct 5.2 of routine capital and and also 5 million as a result of the ECA balance change. We do have about 5.8 million of interfund transfers and that includes a 3.3 from, 3.3 million from the reserve fund. And then we were able to capture about $700,000 of interest income. That still leaves us a negative net cash flow of nearly $0.5 million. Some of the changes between the preliminary budget that we presented in March and what we are proposing today, the major changes is our net income increased by 14.7. That was primarily driven by our operating revenues, about 10 and a half of that being from our ECA revenue rate increases. The departments did a very good job of going back and streamlining their operating expenses and that saved us another $2.7 million. And then we had some savings related to our unemployment costs. The major driver being there is that our pension rate, what we had included in our proposed budget was a rate of 28.05, 28.05% of salaries. We did get notice that it was going to be capped somewhere around the 21.48% of salaries and I think we got confirmation of that this week. That will be our rate in 2019. So there was a million dollar savings with respect to the electric system for that change in the pension rate. As a result of the guidance that you guys provided, we reduced our wage increase rate from 3% to 2% and so from an electric perspective, that saved about $200,000. We did however, get some estimates from our third-party administrators on medical expense and determined that our expense was a little low, so we had to bump up our expense related to that of about $700,000.
On the ECA revenue increase, is that what you're planning to gain from the half-cent increase to June and another half cent in December?
With respect to the difference, yes, between our proposed.
Is that how much that would raise?
This is just the change between the proposed one, but yes, like the difference between what we proposed that had no increases at all.
Okay.
Yes. Our megawatt hour sales are, again, as I mentioned, are up 5.9%, but that really is driven by our wholesale market. Our retail sales are pretty flat to what we project for this year and they are lower than what we budgeted for this year. And again, that's due to mild weather whatever.
So is that increase based on plants not being down as much or what?
We talked a little bit about our dispatch strategy in our close session. We'll talk about it in detail, but yeah, that's, we're going to run, we plan to run the plant more and sell more and more.
Will this help us burn out more coal?
It will.
Yes.
Our operating revenues are up 3.8% again due to the ECA rate increases at $159 million. And then our operating expenses excluding depreciation are up as well at 6.2%, $121 million. And that is driven by the additional fuel cost, the coal cost, associated with the additional megawatt hours. The next chart is a pie chart of our operating expenses and pretty much shows there are fuel costs, being the fuel, the purchased power, and the other production make up about 80% of our total operating costs for this budget.
So the increase in fuel is not necessarily the cost of fuel or is it more?
And that transmission increase, is that due to building we put in more lines or is that part of the?
I think that's a lot.
Budget 10% increase year-over-year for our point-to-point transmission.
Okay.
That's just the cost.
So the next slide shows our major components, a comparison of what we are proposing for the '19 budget and what we budgeted for '18. Again, it shows the drivers being the fuel. Our purchase power is up, but it's offset by other production and then the other driver being the transmission and distribution expense. We like to show our operating costs at Elmer Smith for megawatt hour. And the blue line here represents our non-fuel expense. It includes some of our fixed costs, a lot of our fixed costs and some operation costs, but on a per-megawatt hour basis, you see that is below budget and below what we are projecting for this year. The next line represents our, which is red, it represents our fuel cost. It is pretty much on target with what we're projecting for this year, being slightly above what we budgeted for this year. And then in total, which is represented by the green line, you can see that it is below budget and below what we are projecting for this year as well. Contributed a lot to our increase in megawatt hours as well. Our cash and investment balances are shown here, 116.8 million. That represents total cash days on hand of about 352, a lot of that being unrestricted at 241, which is above our target as well as our minimum. We do have a couple of slides we put together on telecommunications as well. Our operating revenues are 14% above budget at 1.9 million and most of that increase is related to commercial and buyback to the home sales. Our operating expenses are up 25% at 1.6 million and most of that is due to wind stream upgrades as well as a little bit of cost associated with additional headcount. So this slide shows our net income for telecommunications and a pretty much breakeven point despite the fact that we have increased expenses associated with rough there. And that's all I have for the electric system, our wind farm, and the water unless anyone has any other questions.
So you still on target to be positive of what we talked about in the years? You still?
Yeah, if you recall the original buyback home plan, we were going to go negative rather significantly for the first couple of years. This isn't nearly as bad. So we're much improved on that in a little.
So if I saw the questions, moving on to the water system, some of our assumptions there, we have about 551 million cubic feet production. We have included retail base rate increases of 20% effective in July and our wholesale water districts increases we have effective in September. We have assumed a bond issuance of 48.6 million in August, in August of '18, and then we have included about $18,000 of unplanned maintenance, of production maintenance. Our net income here shows us that $500,000 is just above budget and above what we are projecting for this year as well. That's driven by our rate increases. Our operating revenues shows here up 26%, 26.7% again, by the rate increase that's only drivers there. And then if you take that net operating expense, revenues of 5.6 million, we need to deduct our revenue requirements from that, the debt service funding of 4.4 million, also our city transfer, which is just the payment and rule of taxes of $300,000, our routine capital of $2 million, and then we add back $100,000 of interest income. Still leaves us with a negative cash flow of nearly $950,000.
So the 20% increase in water is to pay the bond, the 48 million. So we're going to go and ask for a rate approval for 20% increase to pay for something we had borrowed yet. Is that, we got that flipped last time?
Well, we're budgeting for it if we end up not pursuing that project. We budgeted the same way for two years.
No, I just love what they're doing.
No, we will not go to them until we have the bonding, until the project is moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah, we won't go for a rate increase until we have the project.
So some of the changes between our preliminary budget in March and what we're proposing today, it's not very significant for the water side. Pretty much is driven by our operating revenue changes. We had some changes in our, in the rates that we assumed as well as shifted some timing. We did have benefit, those things that we changed or reduced, as far as operating expense to help relieve the electric system had a benefit to the water system as well, operating expenses of about $100,000 and then our employment costs, the pension decrease of $185,000, the wage increase reduction of $32,000 and then we added back the, about $100,000 of medical insurance. So our cubic feet sales are here, shows we're pretty much flat to, shows a flat trend basically over the last several years, only less than a percent down from what we budgeted last year. We did add a box per se for a, this shows the gallons per thousand, which is very similar to the units that we use for the wholesale district. Our operating revenues are up 13.7% at $13.7 million. Again, that is the increases that we have assumed in the budget. And operating expenses are up 6% and that's pretty much driven by our production costs, which as we can see here on the pie chart, our production costs makes up about 50% of operating expense for the water system. And the next slide shows by category, by major category, a comparison of our operating expense for the water system, what we are proposing today for the '19 budget and what we budgeted in '19. Again, it shows that our production cost is higher and that's pretty much driven by power cost and that's both usage and rate as well as some well and mechanical maintenance. This slide shows our cash and investment balances for the water system. It is at 43.7. It does include the assumed bond issuance of 48.6 million. Our cash days on hands is quite, unrestricted, is above our target and our, not above our target, I'm sorry, it's below our target, above our minimum. At 187 days on hand. So we also tried to put together some total company costs to show you because it's difficult to see some things if they're, when they're spread out in the areas. Some of the budget assumptions that we have included for total company perspective, our community investments that are included is about $195,000 and that that does include GOEDC at $25,000. We have other donations and sponsorships at $170,000. Our wage increase, as I mentioned earlier, that we have included is about 2% and that represents about $499,000. And then our pension rate increase of 12%, that's from the 19.18 to the 21.48% is about $450,000. Again, that is quite a bit of a savings compared to our preliminary rate that was going to be about 28.05.
There's some discussion in one of our previous meetings about the GOEDC donation.
Right. We, you know, with their change in leadership, we weren't able to get someone from, at this time, to come in and give us a presentation. But what we've done is we've included the $25,000 as it has been in several past budgets in the budget. We will be looking for your guidance. I would suggest we keep it in the budget, then let's decide at what level is appropriate for our participation, whether it's the $25,000 or a lesser level, but we have it covered in the budget if we decide to stay at that level.
Okay, so that's still open for some future discussions?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to be.
And we're going to talk to the city about the facts and is there a member and what part of the city is why we have to pay the same thing if they're like?
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
So the next slide shows a comparison of what we are proposing in our GNA expense budget for '19 and what we budgeted for '18. It's pretty much flat to budget and that is despite the wage increases and the pension benefits increases. And the next slide shows that our salaries and benefits, all of that combined, is still, is over half of what makes up our GNA expense budget. So total employment costs and that will be labor and our benefits and then again, this is total company. It's the comparison between what we are proposing on our '19 budget and our '18 budget. It shows that we are up 2.3 million or 7.9%, but the major drivers there are really our medical insurance increase and our pension.
Can you give that slide again? Now, how many employees are included in the health and related?
Covered lives?
Whatever that expense is up there, how many employees are included in that total?
Two hundred, well, 230 employees plus, but with 700 covered lives because we'll have like families and spouses and things like that.
Yeah, many employees. We got 230 that are included in the cost of that health and related.
Correct.
And our next slide shows the totals just for '19. Our total labor is 20.5 million. Our benefits, 6.1, for a total of $31.5 million. Again, it's up 7.9% from last year's budget. And you all had asked us to put together some analysis around quarter of a percent increases and what that equated to. We show a range here from 1% to 3% and it basically equates to about $62,000. That is including labor and benefits per quarter of a percent. And that's why I show here. And that's all I have. Unless anyone has any questions?
Tell me again, how do you calculate what percent of the water pays the dip? What percent of the dip in water pays?
Theirs is unlimited, just usage, but it's valued at the retail rate.
So it's all in the, in none of the zip file?
Okay. So if that's it, I'll introduce the departments that will come forth with the, and.
So the last couple of years, we haven't presented this part. We've included your packs. But I thought it's important for you guys to see a brief overview of the capital projects that are going to be drawn the next year from the department. So we're not going to labor this, but I thought it's important for them to get this in front of you. So we'll have a chance to talk about it.
So Austin McElor will come for delivery, followed by Terry Horn for GNA.
Chris Hono, or Chris Pointe will present telecom and Wes Evans will present for that.
All right, so I'll cover the electric side of this first and then we'll move into the water. On the electric side, we have a net budget of just under $5 million with just under 2.5 of that being defined projects and budgeted reimbursements of about $140,000. We do have a carryover from the FY '18 budget of $415,000. Mainly, most of that is a vehicle, a large bucket truck that's not coming in. We have $100,000 that's being carried over from the Kentucky wire just because of the way that project is. We have a hundred thousand that's being carried over from the Kentucky Wire just because of the way that that project is, is being budgeted out. For a final FY nineteen budget of just under five point four million. That's roughly a three hundred thousand dollar reduction from what our original budget estimate, uh, in our ten-year plan of five point seven million was. Couple of large developments going on, most notably is the Gateway Commons. You can see the blue line here is what we currently have installed. The yellow lines are what we anticipate to install, um, in the FY nineteen process. Mainly that's the loop around Calumet to be able to serve some of the outline areas as well as continuing the primary down towards Highway six oh three Pleasant Valley Road. We currently have all of the street lights except for six installed in the areas for all of the road pavement that's already completed and in place. We will have a few more to install next year. That's, uh, just under three hundred and fifty thousand for what we expect to be done in FY nineteen plan. Second large development is the new development over here on Baron River, or Baron Drive, uh, which is Bluegrass Commons, the residential development. Jago anticipates building approximately sixty-five of those two hundred and ninety-seven homes in the FY nineteen timeframe. Uh, we'll be in, putting in several new, uh, facilities over there as well as pulling a new circuit from our sub-bell located over here on Carter Road over to that development. Anticipated work for the FY nineteen in the development itself is just over two hundred and fifty-four thousand. The cost to pull the new circuit from the substation, uh, to that proximity is just under three hundred and seventy thousand.
What's the payback on those when we, do we estimate what the payback will be for those?
We don't do estimated payback on residential because we have a requirement to serve. If it was a commercial development, then we would, but on the residential side, we typically don't do the, the payback. A couple of other smaller projects that are going on, uh, we're gonna be undergrounding the facilities along Third Street from Saint Elizabeth to Elm Street. Currently, this is an old four KB circuit that is slated to be retired next year. Uh, the conductor is small in size, so it would have to be re-conducted in order to be a, a mainline fifteen KB circuit. So at that time, uh, we'll just be replacing all those underground. This will coincide with the work that we just recently did along Saint Elizabeth Street from second to third and putting those underground. And ultimately, uh, the parking garage gets completed as well as, uh, Hayden's proposed new hotel will be an underground loop of redundancy to those facilities. Uh, that project's just under two hundred and forty thousand. And then, uh, two years ago, we started the tie between Gateway Commons and Heartland Crossing. Um, before we even knew Gateway Commons was coming in, we put that line in and now we've got to complete that over to Heartland Crossing to provide redundancy to both of those developments from two different sources. That was just under a hundred and thirty thousand. Couple of other pilot proj, or a couple pilot projects that were requested from the city. We met with the city manager and a few of his representatives, uh, to come up with these projects. Most notably is the alley, uh, where Jago has bought the, uh, old Ambed property and they own some property there. They've got a potential development that's coming in through there. So we're gonna be undergrounding the remaining facilities of what was left whenever Mellow Mushroom got, the facilities behind Mellow Mushroom got undergrounded. We also have a request to provide some lighting in the Heartland Crossing area near, uh, Mod Pizza. And then there's fourteen light fixtures along Frederick Street from fourth to ninth. Uh, you can kind of see what they look like from that inset fixture there. They're rusted, um, we're, they're at their end of life and we have some concerns of their structural integrity, uh, moving forward. So we'd like to get those placed sooner, replaced sooner than later. All in all, the, the pilot request totaled just under two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then we're gonna continue with our four KB conversion, um, put the focus back around the Sub B, uh, around the Estes, or, um, Cravens Elementary School area and work on retiring that. This was a project that was slated last year, but we canceled those funds, uh, because of some of the developments that we had going on. So normal funding for that's typically about four hundred and seventy-five thousand. We reduced it to just over four hundred and fifty thousand for this year. Couple minor substation projects going on, most notably just replacing some sixteen K B switches at Plant Two as well as a couple of old oil breakers and, uh, some outdated breakers there on the one thirty-eight side. Those projects are about three hundred and sixty-five thousand. And then our routine projects, we got just under two hundred and fifty thousand slated for our new business commercial. Just under a hundred and fifty-seven thousand for new residential overhead. A hundred and forty-one thousand for new residential underground for a total of just under five hundred and fifty thousand for just routine projects. And then other notable projects, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars for pole replacements. As I mentioned in the beginning, we had a, an FY eighteen rollover, that large bucket truck is two hundred and forty thousand dollars, but we're not expecting to receive it until late June. And then we set aside, just trying to slowly get the delivery building updated over there and additional fifty thousand, um, for some minor events over there. Any questions on the electric side?
So did, did Joe tell us that we were gonna wait till we had money in hand from Kentucky Wire before we made an award for contractors?
Yes, well, we have the money. They have paid the, uh, first installment, five hundred and fifty thousand, seven fifty. We received that in the bank, so that was, uh, for the pole changeout. So that included the purchase of the poles as well as the labor, uh, because they were fifty percent cost share on that. So we have been made whole on that process. Uh, we currently, we've opened bids, uh, the bids that were open the other day were, uh, well above what we expected them to be and what I believe not to be accurate, uh, costs. So I'm currently in, in negotiations with Kentucky Wire to see what avenue they want to move forward with on that. The way the RU was written states that they'll pay the actual cost of the bid per the, uh, KRS statutes. But it means that they don't represent a cost that we expected it to be. I've asked them, do they, are they willing to pay that cost per the RU or are they willing to extend the, uh, project timeline out? Currently, that due date of August thirtieth. I've asked them if they would be willing to extend it to October thirty-first and attempt for us to go back to the bidders and negotiate that down to maybe a lower cost.
So the higher cost with the timeframe you put in there?
Yes. Uh, we had some pretty substantial liquidated damages associated with the bid, of which I think may have driven up the cost. Um, but per the RU, we had a deadline to meet and I felt like those liquidated damages weren't the, the cost that was put into the bid. So it, it's in Kentucky Wire's court right now on which way they want to move forward with that. Once they, um, agree to the terms or agree to the next step and before our contractor will start, before we are out any money, then they will be required to pay the pole attachment fee, which was around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which should hold us true. If we get the bids where we expect them to be, a hundred and eighty thousand pole attachment fee will hold us true to that portion of the project. Once the contractor installs the fiber, then Kentucky Wire will pay that portion and we will be held true across our entire contract.
And Gateway Commons, what, the boundary between us and Kennedy, did it follow the road?
It's the road, except for we are providing street lighting on both sides of the road.
So are you, we gonna do lighting for Calumet Trace that goes across to, over there as well?
No, that will be on Kennedy's. We were just providing roadway lighting along Hayden Road itself. Because they wanted that main thoroughfare to have similar lighting on both sides of the road. Kennedy, Kennedy's tariff would not allow them to use the light that we were using.
At the Strategic Planning Conference last fall, there was a lot of, uh, discussion about smart meters and, yeah, is, is that still in consideration or there's no mention of it here?
Uh, we're currently in the midst of the pilot. I think Scott could probably give a little bit more guidance on where we are on the AMI. So I'll turn it over to him to answer that question.
Yeah, uh, we're currently entering, uh, what we call Phase Two of the pilot and we, we're putting meters out in like, uh, five hundred different locations just to continue to look at what we have and address some of the concerns we have mainly on the water side. But as for FY nineteen, we have not put funds, set funds aside to expand that pilot. We wanna look at it and come back with plan, uh, probably March of next year and present something to, for a decision at that time.
So it hadn't taken, totally been taken off the stove, it's just on the backboard of it right now?
Yes, we've just kind of took the brakes a little.
Okay, it's still in consideration, yes.
Okay, thank you. Hey, I'm moving on to the water. We have a net budget of just under two million dollars with ninety-five thousand dollars worth of reimbursements budgeted for that. Most of that is routine projects. There are three, uh, small line upgrade projects, one on Schroth Street, one on South Chesterfield Road and one on Medley Road. And one on Medley Road, it's actually Phase One of a three-phase project. And what that project will ultimately do after FY twenty-one is to increase the water service and fire protection to the Ornsboro Riverport Authority. Currently, they have, uh, some limitations at that way, so we're working on getting a loop fee to help their cost. We'll be, in Phase One, we'll be replacing four hundred and sixty feet of eight inch to a twelve inch line out there. So our project's just under two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Uh, like I said, the routines take care of most of the costs associated with the water side. Most notably is the server meter replace, service and meter replacement without a new customer. Basically, that's where we go through and, and have leaking services or old copper or galvanized or anything like that. Uh, that takes most of their work in the department. After that, uh, got a new line truck to replace at a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. We got several line valves that we replace and, uh, several hydrants that we have scheduled to replace. Continuing on, thirty, third-party damages, uh, just under fifty thousand in building projects of forty-five thousand. Those two projects are what makes up our reimbursements of ninety-five thousand. And like I said, total routine capital projects are just under one point seven million. So in summary, the total electric capital is just under five point four million. The total water capital is just under two million for a total delivery capital of just over seven point three million dollars. Questions on the water side? Thank you.
I'm Terry Horn, I'm the N T manager and I'm gonna go over the capital for shared services. Finances of County wholesale hire marketing and GM, which is the last two don't have the capital. Summary of it all is, if, label them in efficiencies and reliability about two hundred and twenty-two thousand. The security enhancements, sixty-five thousand, some ADA enhancements at twenty-one thousand. And then routine, routine maintenance of thirty-six hundreds for a total of thirty, or three hundred and twelve thousand. Break down the efficiency and reliability, their budget software, we're in our third year of a subscription recommending doing a purchase on that. And the subscription pricing versus, uh, recommendation on the purchase is about a three point five year payback on that. VMware software replacements, we're cyclical, we replace those soft, uh, servers as they age out. Barcoding solution, we'd be putting barcode, uh, for our inventory over in the delivery warehouse. Network switch replacements, those are routine with the exception of next year, it's a, what we call core stack replacement also, so a little more costly than normal. That's normally about twenty thousand. Forklift modification, this is to put dual wheels on a forklift, uh, for terrain, whatever they're out in the yard. Understanding is we sometimes have to relocate one from another location, so this will give us two locations for that. And a data archival solution, that's just to archive some data to help some efficiencies in the service. Security enhancements, uh, the largest is for, uh, security glass and metal. The CSC that would be, uh, as I would label a fuller resistant glass above the counter. It'd be metal plates below the counter to protect the customer service agents. Uh, offline data storage, that's just to secure some data where less likely for cyber criminals to get to the data. And the enhancements would be auto door openers down in the lobby, that's the two doors there so that having somebody that has difficulty opening those doors can open them. And then just routine maintenance. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I just have one slide, I can put it all right up there for you. Uh, total capital is four million dollars. The most significant piece of that, of course, is the continued fiber to the home destruction that we're doing. You can see that, um, sub, the Southeast segment will be the next area that we move to. Commercial capital as far as continuing with, um, business installations, conduit, Austin mentioned a number of projects that we're doing on the electric side. Um, we also put in conduit for fiber simultaneously while we're in there and so that's where those also come from. Uh, and then importantly too, uh, we talked a little bit about Kentucky Wire. There's a portion of the fiber to the home backbone that is, um, traversing that same area that we're gonna be doing that work with Kentucky Wire. Um, so engineering have submitted a, a recommendation that we would do that work simultaneously, even though that's a little bit outside of the schedule of moving from one segment to another. If we were already going to be having contractors that are doing the work, it would be most advantageous for us to try to do that simultaneously. So that's the Kentucky Wire piece.
Has somebody already been, we already sold bonds for that or we don't?
That, that was part of the last condition.
That's part of that last one.
So all the capital that's listed here is part of the bond issuance. And there's a little bit that will, uh, Lynn can probably talk about how we've had to move some things around, but... Yes, the bonds cover these two segments that we're building out here.
Well, we had, uh, previously borrowed from the general, electric general fund cash to start the buildup and, uh, we were paying back the general fund at four percent based on what rates were back then, uh, three years ago or whatever. And, uh, so our bond, uh, document lets us use those bond funds for like items, so, or other projects. If, uh, we, it's, it's, we can go back eighteen months and pay for telecom or fiber at home. So we went ahead and paid off that, I think it's one point two million to count, stop the interest at four percent and the bond issues at three percent. So this, we're, we've used more bond money than we anticipated, but construction was delayed, so we're on, we're on target with the bond funds. Not to have, have more funds until twenty twenty.
It's a shift, saving interest and earning interest.
Yeah, I understand.
Uh, and I do wanna mention, we talked about Kentucky Wire, I think that Austin has done an excellent job of minimizing any of our exposure. I understand there's lots of concerns about what's happening there. Austin and I have had lengthy discussions, we've looked at the contracts, the timings, and he has really thought through how to ensure that we minimize our financial exposure. Any other questions?
All right, uh, I'll be presenting the electric water production budget for capital. In fiscal nineteen, we plan on having thirty-one cap, or capitalized maintenance projects, a total cost of just over twenty-three million. The electric power production is, uh, gonna be about one point four of that. The remainder of being water production, uh, twenty-one point six million dollars. We have twenty-five new projects total, uh, total cost of twenty-two point three million. And then six three-year-old projects, which are all related to Plan A contingency. On the electric side, we have one capital project for fifty thousand dollars. That's related to the retirement of Unit One when it goes down. We've got to take the, uh, Unit One ash pond out of service, so we'll need to take that out of our current water loop and, uh, that's what that's for. We have eight capitalized maintenance projects. They're all associated with Unit Two free week spring outage, uh, all, all around two quarters of the water. On the capitalized maintenance side, we are gonna be doing overhaul on Unit Two Circulate Water Pump. I prefer just bearing the casing, uh, on the, uh, number twelve floor feet pump. A culvert, a gearbox and a, a roof building, a chair, shaft for five hundred and thirty-five thousand. The water project, of course, most of the twenty million is the nineteen point four of the, what we plan on this fiscal if we, uh, proceed with the, uh, headwater treatment expansion. Uh, also on the cap projects on the water side, we got a plan A contingency project, which was a carryover. Uh, we are planning wells and wellfield development project, a three hundred and seventy-one thousand. Uh, we're gonna do a water master plan for three hundred and fifty thousand and other routine basis projects total of about eighty thousand.
What's, what's the details of the water master water plan? Is that the well location?
The water master plan, it's been on about every five year cycle, so we'll do. The last master plan really focused on treatment facility, just in the decision on, on Plan A and the cabin plant expansion. This one, our next big challenge is looking at source water. So we'll be looking at where, for the, for the future, where are we gonna go for wellfield expansion? Uh, so it's gonna be a heavily focused on our source water.
We have six capitalized maintenance projects on the water side for seven hundred thousand total. One is we'll be repainting the physical work on Fredericka Tank, that's a rendering it will look like. Uh, replacement HVAC heaters at cabin plant for twenty-five thousand and some routine contingency work at Plan A and cabin for seventy-five thousand total and some roof work out of Plan A.
Who decided the tank was gonna look like that?
We haven't decided yet. Uh, that was, but that, that color scheme is something that when we, when we repaint, we had no color scheme before, it was just, I wouldn't say random, but... Uh, and we decided to go with something that was fairly consistent. If you, the parish tank has a, it's not the same type of tank, but a similar darker blue on the bottom with the lighter blue on the top. Matches the, if you could say, the color scheme that we had on the cabin plant, but it's not certainly set in stone. We have to have some discussion. The city, before on this tank, wanted the Ornsboro River logo on it. Uh, we paid for that last time. If they wanted to continue that, uh, we had made a decision to put our logo on the tank. We had made a decision to put our logo on the tanks because they are our tanks. So we'll have to have some discussion, but certainly, it can go down to set in stone.
Well, I just thought it might be beneficial and good PR to let the, our rate, our customers have some input what those tanks look like.
Well, if you notice, this tank is light colored and it gets a lot of, I think it's a combination of mold and rogue dust from the bypass, is that still called the bypass? Whatever it's called. And the bottom of that tank, we have to clean it quite often because it gets dingy, the underside, that air right there, going a little darker will help camouflage that, we'll have to clean it less often.
I don't think against that, I was wondering if we ever got any customer input on what those look like?
No, we didn't. As far as I know, we have never done that, but certainly, we've got city input before as far as I, right to left, but not customers. But nothing set in stone.
Is there any other question?